All right, we're gonna call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for February 16th, 2016. Is there anybody here to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right. Preliminary matter of Planning Board minutes. Did everyone get a chance to look at the meeting January 19th minutes?
Yes, we did.
I did.
I motioned to approve the January 19th minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. First item of business, A and R for 6 Loudville Road.
They withdrew their application for the moment. They'll be refiling.
All right. Done with that.
That was fast.
New business, 198 Park Street, Williston, Northampton School.
Hello?
Hi.
We gave everyone a booklet. I'm Chuck McCullough. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Williston. And we spoke to Jessica a little while ago, and we wanted to make sure that at the right moment in time, when we felt like we were in a position to be able to do so, we wanted to come before the Planning Board and just give you an informational kind of overview of what we're thinking about 198 Park Street. And as noted on the cover page, we are looking to plan a solar array on that site. So I wanted to just kind of walk through some of the preliminary ideas on that today, and if there are particular questions that the Planning Board has. We have with us today representatives from Dynamic Energy who are here with us to be able to answer any questions regarding the technical parts of it. We have Mark Reed who's working with us on making sure the site meets all requirements necessary, and Jeff Cannon, our Physical Plant Director, who is here as well. Eric Ness is our Electricity Consultant, our Utilities Consultant. So just to give everyone an overview of what we're thinking about, we just wanted to give you a few facts about the solar array that we're contemplating. What we will be doing, we'll be producing about 800 kilowatt hours, 800,000 kilowatt hours for the school. We already have two solar arrays on campus, one on top of our athletic center, the other one on top of our hockey room. Once this solar array would be up and running, the school would then be producing over 40% of its electricity through solar. So it will be a significant change and an improvement to, as far as our overall utilities purchasing plan. Working with Dynamic Energy as our partners, they are the engineers, the installers, the financiers. They are working at some other large projects. You can Google them. I've done that a number of times. Very interesting company to work with. Working with Skidmore College, they've done a very large array there, and they're working right now with Hobart and William Smith Colleges. That's ongoing right now.
Correct.
Heritage Surveys has been helpful to us, obviously, in laying out the site and making sure that we are meeting all requirements necessary in that regard. Some things that we've been considering all along institutionally is that anything like this is a visible green initiative. We've been trying to do that, and trying to do projects like that on campus so the students recognize it. We want to make sure that we're thinking about what the school is going to be like 20, 30 years from now. Renewable energy is definitely part of what we are, our plans. And regarding 198 Park Street, just a very practical matter, I don't know if anyone's been out to that site, but you know, there's a collapsed barn on it, and we want to make sure that that site gets cleaned up in the process of doing all that. That's definitely in our plans, our immediate plans. As far as the education opportunities, I had the opportunity to talk to some other representatives in town, just to let them know, this isn't just for Williston in terms of an informational source. We're going to be trying to make sure that there's information available to the public schools as well as Williston. We're gonna be using this as a classroom for the students to be able to come out, look at the site, and understand what solar energy is, how it works, and how this particular array works, and how it's generated, what type of electricity it's generating. To that end, you know, there will be just a small shed on campus, on that site, just to be used for classroom, just a portable shed, so that we can just keep people out of, you know, if it's raining or whatever. But to have that be an opportunity for people to go onsite and, you know, conduct class there. We will be setting up monitors on campus, but certainly would be willing to work with the public schools with that as well. There are monitors you can put on the wall, and it shows in real time what's going on. Very interesting aspect to this. And certainly tours of the facility would also be something that would be available. As far as the location goes, this is a map of the location at 198 Park Street. There's Park Street right there. There's Whitebrook Middle School. The area that you see right just below the 198 Park Street site is, that is the entrance to Whitebrook. It's the long driveway that goes in and out. That's the location. Just to give you a little better idea from a topography standpoint, just so you can get a handle on where the driveway is and where the site is. As far as the construction goes, you know, I think you've all seen solar arrays along the Mass Pike and, you know, in different locations. But it really is framing like this that would be put on the ground. There's some design that goes into how it's going to be attached to the ground, and I leave that for the more technical folks. But you also, you know, you can see that some of the framing that's put up would be where the panels would be mounted, and then ultimately the panels are mounted on the framing that's established. These are just samples. This is just to give you an idea that there would be at least one location where we might have to do some work like this. Again, we may or may not, but I'm gonna leave that to Dynamic Energy to answer any questions that you might have in that regard. As far as the solar array layout is, this is very preliminary, but this is after all the work done by Mark Reed and Heritage Survey. That area that you see in the upper left is, there's some buffer zones and some things we have to consider. There may be opportunity to use some of that area or not, but first blush, we wanted to see if we could fit it all in, not in buffers, you know, what would be 100-foot buffer zone. Mark, you might want to comment on that.
Sure.
But that will give you kind of a quick idea of what we're thinking about. And we own the property, and we've done all the survey work, we've done all the wetlands work. We're just waiting right now for the utilities to sort of give us an approval, and then Dynamic Energy can start in on the work, which will be, I'm sure, coming back before whomever they need to for appropriate permitting and guidance from the city. So I'll leave it at that. Is there anything I haven't touched on that needs any color, or are there any particular questions on the plans?
Just real quick, and I appreciate you guys coming and getting us up to speed on the project. That's really helpful. But it sounds like this is relatively imminent. Is the plan to sort of move forward in the near future, or do you have a timeline, or...?
You know, we'd like to do it as soon as possible, you know, there's benefit, you know, operational benefit as soon as possible.
Sure.
But we want to make sure that we do it right, so I'll leave it to, maybe you guys can comment on that.
Yeah, so as mentioned, the first thing that we need to wait for is the utility interconnection, which they're in the process of reviewing, and that can take anywhere from 30 days to 90 days.
Okay.
So at that point is when we would put together a full presentation with stormwater management plans, E and S plans, and come back to the board with the full package of our engineering.
Okay.
So that's all you're waiting for, is the electric companies to give you okay?
At this point, that's what we're waiting for, yes.
But you're gonna be using their poles and that for direct, don't you?
Yes, we will be connecting directly into the utility, and we will install approximately four utility poles kind of on the corner of the property that will carry, you know, a re-closer and some metering equipment.
You're using the gray colored panels, right? Or whatever?
The, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say solar panels.
The darker colored panels?
Yes.
Because I understand that they're come out with now, you can see through them.
Yeah, we will be using the colored panel. You won't be able to see through them.
I just wanted to point out two things. One is we've already gone through Conservation Commission to confirm the wetland boundaries. So as Jeff was saying, that there are wetlands located on the property here and here, and these are the 100-foot buffer zones associated with those. So that this current layout, as you can see, is, the panels are outside the 100-foot buffer zone. Just a little bit of fencing would be in the buffer zone, so we would do another filing with the Conservation Commission to confirm the proposed work under their jurisdiction, as well as your board.
What kind of fencing and security stuff do you have there for this kind of facility?
Typically, we would install a six-foot-high chain link fence, have two points of entry, and they would be locked.
Any other questions, folks? Anybody from the public here have any questions?
I got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Does anybody approach the neighborhood in this thing?
Yeah, there's.
We ended up, we had a presentation about, what about? About a month and a half ago, two months ago? We had a presentation.
And all the butters...
The butters noticed this one out, yeah.
And that was specifically for wetlands delineation, but through that process, the people, the people that came to the meeting certainly were aware of what we were interested in doing.
And supportive of that. Yes, very interested and very intrigued by what we were thinking.
Seemed happy that that kind of thing was gonna be used on the site as opposed to a building or something.
Yeah.
The board.
Anything else, folks? Any other questions?
Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, have a good night.
Yeah, I didn't want to go around and stuff like that. They're only gonna come back.
Yeah.
All right.
Mark, you don't need to project.
No, I don't need, I can.
All right. Next up, 412 Main Street, Yankee Hill Machine, request for a special permit.
Yes.
If somebody wants to speak to this, just sort of give us an overview of the project. Oh, Marcus.
Take that, or...
Double duty.
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Morning. Bear with me one second.
Sure, no problem.
Let's get this up so the board members proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Well, that's mine, Chuck.
Oh. You sure you want?
All right. You're stealing my stuff. So, all right. Yeah, I'm off there. Okay. I don't want to look back to you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Reed from Heritage Survey. Chris and Kevin Graham, who are co-owners of Yankee Hill Machine, are here tonight. They are currently located on Lad Avenue in Northampton, which is known as Bay State section of Northampton. Tom Miranda, their attorney, is also here tonight to answer questions that the board may have. And we're very excited about the upcoming purchase of a vacant building on Main Street so that Yankee Hill Machine can relocate their business into East Hampton and provide jobs and revenue to the town or to the city. So currently, this is a two-parcel site, being 12.7 acres of active area, which is located between Main Street and the rail trail, you'll like that, and a 14-acre parcel of land which is located on the west, I'm sorry, on the south side of the bike trail, which is vacant and comprised mostly of wetland areas. The site itself is, I'll flip to this colored rendering, make it a little easier. As you can see, out of the 12.7-acre parcel of land, about 50% or more is wooded and contains wetlands. So the active site that we're talking about is only about six acres or so that are being used. There's an existing building which used to be operated by J.P. Stevens, and then ArgoTech purchased it, and they've closed and moved, consolidated business up to Greenfield with the site itself. Maybe I can just bring this over here, make it easier. So as I mentioned, Yankee Hill Machine is under a buy-sell agreement to purchase this property. Going through the East Hampton zoning regulations, it requires a special permit from the Planning Board to operate their manufacturing business on the site itself. Yankee Hill Machine is a, manufactures machines, parts for guns, so they currently are doing that and have been doing that since...
1951.
1951, when his grandfather started the business and his parents ran it.
I know that father.
Now they're taking over from the parents, so longstanding business within Northampton and moving over here. We're also in the wireless communication overlay district, which doesn't really apply to us because we're not looking for a cell tower. But those are the two zoning districts that we're in. It is zoned properly for the use of the business, and as the application says, the building itself will not change. There'll be cosmetic changes to the building to clean it up, refresh it, it needs some work, make it a little more attractive. The existing sign that's out there will be utilized, it'll change from ArgoTech to Yankee Hill Machine. So there's really no change in signage at all with this proposed project. The interior modifications to the building, which will include construction of a new retail showroom, which is about 800 to 1,200 square feet, and we provided customer parking as well as handicap parking designated on the site itself where if somebody's coming in and wants to, for walk-in business for the area. Manufacturing is about 38,150 square feet, which is within the building itself. They currently tie in bond out of Westfield, work with them to make sure that they're in full compliance with all state and federal requirements for their oils and exhaust fumes and whatever might come associated with their business in itself, and we'll be updating that plan for the new facility. I gave one copy to Jessica with the application. It's quite thick. For that, so.
Is this the compliance plan you're talking about?
Correct. Yeah. So that...
You received this in an email?
Very involved, very involved, that piece of document. We're not proposing to cut any trees, so the lighter green area is lawn. We're not proposing any work in the darker green whatsoever. The demands on city utilities are low. They don't require a lot of water or don't generate a lot of effluent from the site itself. It's only bathrooms for the business that they have. Parking. Luckily, the site has quite a large existing parking area. Per the zoning, it requires that the size of the building divided by 600 square feet is the number of parking spaces, which is 83, or 0.75 of your two largest shift changes. There are 60 employees would be daytime, and if they get to full capacity during the second shift, it'd be 30 to 40. So that in itself, if you add the 60 and 40, goes 100, 0.75 is 75 parking spaces. We're providing 103 parking spaces on the site, which includes 93 designated for employees, five handicap, and five visitors' parking, so that we're over either calculations relative to parking for the facility itself. The existing curb cup, no change. Not gonna change that for the area whatsoever. Potentially, as they grow, they may have three shifts. The third shift, once they get up in operation, they hope to be able to grow, to have a third shift, would have about 30 or 40 employees.
Are there two shifts right now?
Right now, they have two shifts.
We currently have a single shift, and we're working on building a second shift.
Okay, so the plan is to start off with two and then grow to three?
Yeah. Correct.
Within the application, there's modifications in the building itself that meet all state and federal requirements. For instance, there's an indoor shooting range required to test their product. It will be located in the middle of the building, soundproofed, not only for anyone that lives around it, but their own employees. They don't want their own employees to listen to the shooting rings and to be a distraction to them, so it will be. There's also other mechanical equipment that will be within the building itself. For instance, a coolant evaporator, paint booth, welding, all part of manufacturing for the building itself. All that is going to fall under that document that Chet has, part of tie-in bonds, training, how to properly maintain that, which is all part of state federal regulations.
Do you have a specific customer for this, or is it bid and send it out, or they come in?
Most of our visits actually comes from the general civilian, the public. We do also provide to enforcement agencies and actually a lot of college campus for security services as well.
So it's just a large array from the public to...
Correct. Yeah. We do do some government contracting as well.
So that's a general overview of what Yankee Hill is being proposed on this site, and we can answer any questions that anyone might have.
Bunch.
Sure, you want to start?
And I know that Jessica emailed copies of review comments from Dusette that we received this afternoon.
Yeah.
And we can talk about that.
Those are definitely...
Yeah, maybe we should start with that stuff.
So their review comment number one...
Yep.
Is the recommendations about spot rates, checking to make sure that we're in full compliance with handicap accessibility ramping, which we can do, just didn't have enough time to do it this afternoon.
Yep.
This area is well under the standards of 2% cross pitch for any handicap parking spaces. There is a ramp that I checked going up. This is the only area which is under the 5% requirement for sidewalk. Then this is, across here is flat. So the general public, or anyone that comes in to visit, salesmen or prospective clients would come in the front door. All the other doors are locked. There's currently an employee entrance here which is locked and only be able to be accessed by employees of Yankee Hill Machine. So it's all gonna be controlled through that area. Also, within the building itself, there is separation in restricted areas for the showroom so that somebody that comes in there can't get access to the manufacturing section of it. With that, so.
Before you go on that number one, I just want to ask a couple questions. We're talking about...
Sure.
The ADA requirement.
Correct.
At this point. And I have it from our local ADA official that you, four spots are required. I think you have five in the parking lot.
Correct.
Can you confirm that that's true?
Correct.
And this is a little bit off topic, but since we're talking about the parking spots really quickly, I noted that you used the 600 square footage in your, for your calculation of how many spots to have. So I just want to ask this so that I understand, because I think I'm understanding there's a retail component to this as well. So the retail calculation says it's 300 square feet to calculate parking spots, whereas the manufacturing calculates 600, so there's kind of a balance there.
Right, between the two. Between the two. And the retail is only 1,200 square feet, so divided by three is only four spaces. We've got five spaces for customer, so we kind of bumped it up. And also, you know, providing handicap to somebody who's handicapped that's a visitor or an employee. We did, you know, put in another handicap space to be above the minimum requirement of, or to handle either an employee that might be handicapped or general public.
And one of the spots is large, it's like a van-sized space, is that correct?
Correct. One has to be by regulation a van accessible. Your first handicap space has to be van accessible, and then all others can be standard, whatever one's used to. So we have one van accessible, and then four additional handicap spaces.
Thank you.
For the area. But within, that's why we kind of put that five space there to go through that 1,200 square feet for the retail part of it. We needed four, and we have the space, and we'll put an extra one in here.
Thank you.
Being positive. The walk-in business aspect of it, maybe Chris or Kevin can talk about that. It's not, it's not like it's minute by minute.
Right.
I have a lot of questions about that. Maybe we should get to that.
Yeah, we can hold off on that. Let's work on these things here first.
Sure. Okay. Item number two is that the, they're suggesting that we delineate an area showing for snow storage and keep that outside the 100-foot buffer zone. There is a lot of room on the site currently for snow storage. We have all this area here for snow storage that's outside the 100-foot buffer zone. We have this area here and this area here for this, kind of taking, you know, taking care of that area. So we could revise the plan and show, you know, snow storage areas.
Showing again where the trash is?
So trash is, is, all the recyclable material is inside the building. It's not outside. So that all the metal shavings and so forth from the machine, machining of the parts is maintained in recycling bins inside the building. There will be a dumpster in the back. There's currently three loading docks, doors in the back of the building. They don't have the required, they don't need three. They could get away with one loading dock and the other one. So we're gonna utilize one of the overhead doors to have trash for waste, general waste. So it's gonna be in the rear of the building.
It's still stored inside?
What's that?
Still stored inside, or is it on the, is it an exterior loading dock, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there are overhead doors that, there's three overhead doors, and there's, within the application, we got pictures.
Oh, right.
And it shows a picture of the overhead doors in the back.
That is a covered space also.
Okay.
On the shavings and stuff like that, that you're gonna recycle, is that picked up by a special company, or...
Correct. Yeah, we currently have a materials recycling company that comes in monthly and removes our scrap.
That take care of the oil also? Don't take care of the oil also?
Yes. Ninety-nine percent of our cutting fluid is water soluble, which is where the water evaporator comes in, which Mark had mentioned before. And at that point, once it evaporates, we have another recycling service coming to reclaim the rest of the solution after the water's been evaporated from it.
That's what I was mostly interested in, is the recycling, who picks it up or what, if it was?
You guys may be using a triacalortholine or mineral spirits or acta tone or any of that kind of stuff?
No.
Are you ISO nine thousand certified?
We are not nine thousand certified.
You're not?
We're mine owners.
So, so there will be a dumpster in the back.
Okay.
And there's an overhang so that you can access it. So that, you know, the hauler can come dump it out here and take care of it. And then that leads to overhead loading dock doors for deliveries for their needs. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Number four is we recommend the applicant determine the largest truck which will maneuver throughout the site. And this facility has been in use since nineteen seventy-one. And there's been lots of tractor-trailer trucks in and out of the building. I took a look at that today. And a fifty-foot, fifty-three-foot tractor-trailer truck, there is ample room to come in. There's, as you can see, there's kind of two Y's here. That come in either back up here or back over here and exit. So this is the main route for the truck traffic coming through. So it will accommodate, the site will accommodate, you know, fifty-three-foot long tractor-trailer trucks.
Give me some perspective, is that what we'd consider an eighteen-wheeler?
Yeah, an eighteen-wheeler, yes.
A large eighteen-wheeler.
A large eighteen-wheeler.
Yeah.
You see, you'll see the, as you're driving down the turnpike for ninety-one, you see fifty-three on the box, part of it. That designates as fifty-three feet length for a tractor-trailer truck.
Is that the largest sized truck you guys have or you anticipate having?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's only one vendor that has that large of a truck.
Most of them are smaller?
Yeah.
Okay.
UPS, Federal Express, and other, you know, carriers like that.
Yeah, I think they're largest trucks. UPS is our forty-eight.
Item number four, talking about the three eight-hour shifts in the retail components, we kind of talked about that already.
That's number five I have.
I'm sorry, five, you're right, Chet. Give my glasses a jump. Number five. Currently, and if you drive by, and I just came from Southampton, so it was nice. There is lighting in the front of the building. There's three lights here, there's a light here and one on either side of the entrance that light up the front of the building. So there really isn't any lighting in the parking lot itself. So that's something that we need to look into, whether we do wall packs. And whether we shed that light out with new LED lighting. Really gives you an awful lot of light. Or we need to, we need to put some poles and that's something that we can investigate.
Okay.
Yeah.
For that area within the parking areas. Number six is the existing onsite stormwater system. We are not proposing any change in utilities of any kind, including the stormwater system. We recognize that, that the existing catch basins need to be cleaned and repaired. You know, they're buying this property. We haven't really investigated, fully investigated what needs to be changed or upgraded relative to that, which we will be doing. There also will be annual maintenance of these catch basins. All catch basins that pumped out on a regular basis to make sure they're clean.
Set a tiny limo.
And, yep. And sediment be removed, sand and other sediment that might have come. There is a couple of catch basins in the lawn area in the front. Because the roadway is a little bit higher here, it dips down and it kind of has a little swale through the middle section of it back up to the building. So we're definitely gonna be inspecting the system. It's their benefit because they're gonna be living with it.
Sure.
And make any modifications necessary to make the corrections for that.
See where it says that they'll be inspected and cleaned if necessary.
Right, I'm sure they need to be.
Will be.
Yeah, will be. I'm sure they're gonna be, you know, definitely needed to be cleaned.
Right.
Because then you got a, you got a starting point. You know that everything's clean and everything's working and you're moving on. The item number seven is the applicant states that the existing drainage system within the building has been sealed. Way back, previous owners, it used to be a floor system of drainage in the building itself. That subsequent, when Argotec, I believe, purchased the building, they sealed it. We're gonna ensure that, working with time bond, that there is no, you know, floor drains that are still in there because that doesn't meet state and federal requirements.
Right. Expect the ones that are there to make sure they are.
Actually, the ones that are there, we're gonna seal right off with concrete.
That's even better.
All together. We don't wanna.
Put in a new system?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Everything's gonna be upgraded within the building itself to today's standards for that. So that we don't want any possibility of anything within the building to enter into the stormwater system. Come, all the stormwater drains down to the line that's in the back. So that's definitely a concern that as the new owners have, that we want to address and we want to be aggressive.
Okay. So I mean, it sounds like we're gonna need some more information, but do you guys want to ask more questions?
I'd like to just start off with, tell me, I want to know more about this. I want to know, I want to know more about the retail component, the kinds of clients that are coming in. I want to know, are you manufacturing just parts of firearms or are you manufacturing and assembling your own firearms then being tested? I want to know how you are selling them.
Sure.
Tell me everything.
Right now, we currently make firearm parts for a variety of different firearms. And we also produce a complete rifle that we assemble and test. Currently, at our current location, we don't have any kind of a retail component to it. There's no showroom or anything like that. So we have a sales network through different distributors and dealers and firearms. And then we have our website where we sell retail. Basically, the way that everything does ran right now is if it's anything, we say with a serial number, so anything that's controlled by any sort of government entity, we don't sell it except for, to our dealers, our pre-licensed dealers. Our plan with the retail side of things is to be able to have a showroom where people come in and can handle the product and kind of make an informed decision because it's a lot easier than trying to buy something off the website. And our intention too is to be able to offer the firearms for sale as well. Obviously, we have to go through the same process of background checks and everything that we would at any other federal licensed firearm dealer would have to go through.
Does that mean a prospective client could contact you, say I'm really interested in a great product?
Yeah.
And then come in and see it and maybe test it in the range that you're building?
No, the range would only be for our own manufacturing purposes.
Right.
It won't be open to the public.
So who can use the range?
Only YH M employees.
And for what reasons?
Just for product testing to make sure that it physically functions.
Well, that means if I or a customer comes in and says, I'm interested in this firearm, I want to test it. What then they do? Can they test it on where or they have to go to?
They would.
An independent firearms area?
Correct, they would at that point, you know, have to basically look up a dealer within their area who might have the product that has a range at their facility.
And then the weapon will go there? Or depending upon whether they have licensing or not?
How do you handle that distribution? Right now, you're sending it to dealers.
Correct.
Will you continue to do that?
Yeah.
Or could someone walk away? And how does it leave you and go to the dealer?
Basically, the way that the ATF works is for the general firearms. Basically, we just have to keep a copy of the records and they come in and do typically a, every three to five year inspection of those records. So when the firearm is boxed up to leave the facility, it basically gets logged out of our electronic acquisition and disposition record. With the information of that dealer who it's going to. And then when they receive the firearm, they do the same thing, where they log it into their system and ultimately log it out to their customer.
Yep.
If I was to want to take a look at your firing, do I have to make an appointment? You can't just walk off the street or?
With what we're proposing with the, with the retail showroom is it, is basically we'll have a showroom where somebody can come in during our regular business hours on the seven-thirty to four. They can come in and, you know, talk to a sales representative at their facility, look at the general product. And we're not sure how we're gonna work yet, but we're planning on having some firearms available so that they can physically see the product out in the showroom.
That's standard at most dealers that, you know, if you go to buy a firearm, they let you handle the product. It's unloaded, of course.
Right, I just wanted to know how they were going to set that up. I realize that's how I buy firearms.
And that's all contingent on you guys getting federally licensed for this as well, correct?
Right. Under our current licensing, we can dispose of firearms to individuals. But what we would do is seek a separate license to do the retail side of things. And keep the retail aspect totally separate books from the manufacturer.
Now, in order to test it, it means you have to have some ammo on site.
Yeah, correct.
How's that being stored?
Right now, they're stored in a locked area that only specific employees can get to. It's actually electronic keyed, so only people with those keys can get in and it keeps a record of who goes in and out. And the firearm assembly and storage areas are controlled the same way.
Correct.
Do you have a general idea from sort of your current retail sales, I guess, your direct sales? Like the local geography, you know, is this, do you have a lot of local customers that you expect may come to you directly? Or do you not really know at this point?
It's hard to say. I would say on average, if we have one person contact us and say, hey, I'd like to come into your showroom, maybe one person every three months says that.
Okay.
Every once in a great while, like once or twice a year, someone will stop by and say, I found your address on your website. What can I look at? And we basically go, well, we have a lobby. But there's not really a high demand of people coming in and doing a lot of the shopping on site.
You have one.
We used to have a sporting outfit here in East Hampton under ten, but that sort of closed.
Right.
You're looking to expand to have more products.
Potentially, you know, it definitely helps with the local customer to physically come in and buy, you know, even if they just need a site or something like that. That side of it really helps them a lot. We don't really foresee the retail side of it really taking off, you know, like a full-on export and goods stuff to store. We don't picture that whatsoever. It's just.
It'd be great if we got to that level today.
It's basically just to help supplement our product line and help inform the user about our product with hands-on factory tech essentially. Factory direct pricing, factory direct sales.
Well, and hopefully, once you have a retail store, you, there would be more people that would be interested.
Right.
Building security.
Yep.
You talked a little bit about the ammo. Can you tell me a little bit more about cameras, doors?
Yeah, our plan is to do full camera monitoring at a very minimum of the entrances. There's really only three entrances, the main entrance, the main manufacturing entrance, and then the secondary entrance at the rear of the building. But right now, at our current facility, all of the controlled areas also have CCTV monitoring. And general security of the building, we're gonna go through and re-haul the entire alarm system that's in it. Because basically the answer that we got from the current owners is, we know it's there, we don't know how it works. And that wasn't satisfactory to us obviously, so.
Yeah, also at our current facility too is each of these security rooms which you spoke about for the firearms and ammo store, those are each under their own secure security system as well with their own separate codes. So essentially, one of our buildings that we're now has three security codes for depending on different room you're in.
And is that the plan for this facility as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We actually, we hope to put electric locks even, you know, coded to the employee's ID badge on the external doors.
How many employees did you say?
We have about sixty people right now.
Sixty?
So we're pretty much a full shift.
Is anyone in there dedicated to security?
I wouldn't say anybody's dedicated, but our safety manager also kind of manages the security aspect of things. Make sure that the cameras are operating properly, things like that.
Those badges you talked about, say I'm working in section B or A.
Yep.
Will that badge allow me to go, say, to section C?
It'll only be basically, it'll have like a magnetic strip or something and it'll only allow clearance in whatever area we allow access to.
So you can't jump from one place to another?
Right, so someone in general manufacturing could get in the front door, but couldn't say get into the ammunition storage or something like that.
The range is, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in. I'm just gonna go ahead. The range is in the center of the building.
Correct, yeah.
What is the anticipated noise, do you think, if I was standing in the parking lot?
Here it is, and the parking lot, my goal is to have it where you really can hear it. Because, you know, we can't have it where inside an employee can't be around it and have it be sold out and there's gonna potentially cause you any damage either. So, you know, it's beneficial for us to keep it quiet inside, so, you know, our plan is to have it where it's barely hear, audible outside. We currently do test firearms at our current facility and you can't really hear it outside at all. Sounds like a light bump out.
That's a very low-tech, non-soundproof system. Basically, we just build a box inside the building with ventilation.
Yep.
This one will be a bit more?
This one will be a bit more sophisticated.
Yep, it'll be installed by Savage Ring Systems out of Westfield, who is a nationally known indoor firearms installer as well. Yeah, they do complete ranges and everything, so.
Harry, once you're up and running, would you ever consider having tours in there?
People ask for tours all the time because we, our product is ITAR regulated. Tours can get a bit tricky.
What does that mean, ITAR regulated?
What does that stand for? International Trade and Export. Something R.
Rifle.
Regulations.
Okay.
Basically, because we deal in firearms components, everything from the components themselves to the drawings to even the information booklets are controlled, they can't leave the country. Foreign nationals can't have access to that if they do come in. So what we do for tours are typically we have an ATF examiner class comes in to do the tour of the facility. So they've all been through the proper background checks and everything to be part of ATF. So we do some educational classes with them, but if a retail customer comes in and says, hey, I heard about you, can I see your shop?
Well, I'm talking about like, like the high school level, like, you know, freshman or sophomore in high school or maybe eighth grader or something, so they could see a machine facility and say, well, maybe I want to be a machinist, that kind of thing.
Right, we have done a couple of tours recently with the North End High School with the engineering department group, where they actually came in and saw the facility and saw how our engineering side of things work. And then physically went up to the floor and saw the actual machine equipment and that type of thing. Obviously, the controlled areas, they're not allowed into.
Correct.
Right.
Even when the controlled products are in the manufacturing process, we have locking cabinets that travel with the parts. So even if the operator, you know, leaves to go take his ten-minute break, everything gets locked back up and accounted for.
Other than at schools, say you have a group of East Hampton people that want to see how it is. Ten, twelve, fifteen people, you do background checks on them before they do the tour? No.
No, we generally don't do it to the general public.
I mean, it's not as easy as just calling them, Nick, I need the background check. The system's not designed for that.
Right.
No, I was just, the way you were talking about background checks.
Yeah, right.
It's basically just for buy and sell.
Right, right. We actually, just so you know, any of our current employees, when they fill out an application, we do provide, are doing background checking on any of our employees as well when they're applying.
That was my next question.
Yeah, anyone who would be prohibited from possessing a firearm, we don't, we don't allow them.
We don't allow them to work for us in any capacity.
Okay, now, now the shooting range, getting back to that, you said in the application that it's gonna be done during normal business hours?
Yes.
If you end up running three shifts, what would normal business hours be for the shooting range purposes?
Shooting range would honestly only be for a shift.
Okay.
And even with the potential to go into third shift, the intention is to not be able to hear it outside the building.
Is there any?
Our intention is to not be able to hear it inside the building outside of the shooting area.
Right. Is there anything else involved in the manufacturing process that creates noise that might be heard outside the building?
We don't have a foundry or forge or anything like that, so there's no, you know, heavy impact or anything like that.
Exhaust fans, I noticed there's a couple of places where there's ventilation and stuff, anything that generates any real?
There's a few exhaust fans existing that we plan to use. There's already an existing paint booth in the place that we plan to, you know, bring up to our standards with our paint booth system to eliminate emissions and things like that. To eliminate emissions and things like that. There shouldn't be any new sources of noise and even those fans, you know, they're not going to be running twenty-four hours a day anyway.
Okay.
And then the general machining, I don't really know how to describe it. I mean, it's at the OSHA level where the employees have to wear earplugs, but outside of our current, you know, building where you can see gaps through some of the windows like that, you can't hear the manufacturing sounds.
Okay.
And the building is going to be air conditioned and heated, so it's not like there's going to be overhead doors open with wide open access or anything like that.
And no other emissions? I mean, you mentioned the the paint shop, that sort of thing. I mean, nothing that you can sort of smell or?
Nope. What we have is, I believe that we've provided you with a copy of it. We have a EPA approved paint booth that we currently use that meets all the regulations for the paint contraction. We plan on using that at the new facility as well.
Yeah. And the coolant evaporator too is already being tested to make sure that the emissions permit meet the standards so that a permit isn't necessary for it. And once everything is up and running at the new building, we want, we're going to have all of that re-inspected and make sure that everything still meets those specifications.
Does your machining use water?
It uses water in the cooling process, so it's not like we're constantly running water through the machines.
So about how much are you using?
They have about a thirty gallon holding tank in it and, you know, for the most part, once you fill it, you have to top it off maybe once a week in the summer if there's high level of heat and that type of thing. And, you know, it's only two or three gallons to top it off. So, you know, our, our water level consumption is very high. And the impact of the source system is literally, you know, almost irresistible and it's safe to wash it.
Don't you guys change that water on the machines?
We do. And that's where the water evaporator comes in the plug.
Yeah. I mean, I used to work at Berkshire. I've been there for like fifteen, twenty years and at least I changed that like, like maybe once a week, you know?
We generally do ours, you know, on the monthly side of it. It all depends on how busy we are. The new coolants that we have anti-microbial, like that mumble, all solutions inside of it now, so it allows the water to be in the tank a long, before it gets that much filled with.
At least they have their own track weathering still out there. Track like that stuff?
Yeah, we don't use any of that.
Can you show me in that parking area where you anticipate your retail component, your guests would be, where your employees will park?
Sure.
How is that?
Sure.
Can you show the difference?
So we have.
Understand the flow of parking.
Yep. We have five designated customer parking spaces right here.
Those are next to the handicap spots.
We will have signage, okay? So if he's a non-handicap customer coming in, there's five spaces right here. They come up the sidewalk in the front of the building and enter the front of the facility.
And all the other spots are for employees?
And then we have five handicap spaces here, which will be shared between employees and customers. Same thing. There is an existing employee entrance right here, which should be gated or not gated, keyed and accessed only by employees. So then if there's a handicap person, customer, will come up this sidewalk and into the front of the building. So everything is right in this area here. This is all the ninety-three employee parking areas through that area.
Assigned spots or you don't foresee a need for that for employees?
We don't foresee a need for it. You know, at our current facility, we have it set up where basically it's just reserved and visitor and then the rest of it's just general employee parking.
Is that going to be striped by any chance?
I'm sorry?
You're going to have it striped?
Yes, we're going to stripe those. Yes.
You talked a little bit about lights earlier and I kind of, I wanted you to repeat it a little bit because I kind of heard that maybe in the back of the lot, you were afraid that there wasn't sufficient lighting?
Correct.
Can you point that out again?
So currently, if you drive by, there's lighting, light poles here, here and here to illuminate the sidewalk. There's a light pole here at the corner and on either side of the gated entrance, this is a gated, so they can shut it and close it off. For access into it. It's currently set up that way. There's a chain link fence that runs around that whole front of the facility. So what we need to look at is this provides lighting for the entranceway and lighting coming in to this area here where we don't have lighting currently is for the employee parking.
So that's something you guys are going to look at and I think, I mean, I think there's a couple of things you're remaining them to come back with, so I think that that seems like something.
Right. So that's, you know, that's something that we would need to look at, whether we can do it with wall packs or we need some additional new LED lighting poles.
Or if there are wall packs existing on the building too that.
Correct. Could be there.
Yeah.
Not functioning properly or shut off because it's been vacant.
Right.
But I know driving by, if you drive by after the meeting, you'll see that this is the.
It's well lit in the front.
Yeah, it's well lit in the front as well, yeah.
Yes, well lit in the front.
That covers what I have. I've got some potential.
You're going to be able to lock this down on weekends, like on a Sunday? You're not going to be working on Sunday, I wouldn't think, right?
I hope not.
It'd be good for business, but tired.
You can be working Saturdays, but you probably might work Saturdays, I would think, right?
That's a possibility.
We try occasionally, but it's relatively rare.
We try to avoid it whenever we can because.
We want our employees to have a lot of work Saturday.
But, yeah, the idea behind the gate too is to use that whenever, whenever the last shift exits, whatever manager is leaving last, we'll lock that up to secure the facility.
Um, Mark mentioned the gate. Is that something that's generally going to be open during the retail hours or do employees have key access or how does that work?
That gate will be open during any normal business hours. So basically, you know, whoever, again, manager usually shows up first, open the gate and allow the other employees to come in and then the last one out, lock it up behind them.
So in theory, if you have three shifts, it will just be open?
In theory, it would just be open, yeah.
Or on the weekends, it'd be closed.
Right, yes.
Right. Okay.
That would be alarmed during the weekends or at night?
The gate itself, I don't know if it would be to tell you the truth. I know the building itself will be, but I believe the gate currently just has padlock.
Yeah, it looks like a padlock.
Yeah, yeah, just a standard.
It's no removal? We touched base?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I just.
And I think that's another thing that, I mean, if you're already coming back with other stuff, I think it probably makes sense.
Yeah, that'll be in there.
We'll have it marked.
Yeah, but I think it's, it's in the narrative. It's just not on the site plan.
Right.
Yeah.
And just for the record, the fire department, I guess, was the only other department that responded and they had no objections, so.
Things that stood out for me that I'd like to see covered, you know, more specifics on are the lighting in the back end of the lot.
Yep.
The catch basins are in fact going to be cleaned.
Yep.
It's sort of a stipulation. That needs to be in the wording.
Right.
Well, you could also condition that.
We can condition.
You can certainly, I mean, I don't feel like they would need to come back. I think that's something that, and we've done, or the board has done that in the past, is condition that the storm, that the catch basins will be cleaned on a regular basis.
I suggest that maybe some of those could be conditioned, but I'm not sure. Let me get through the list and we'll find out if any of them in fact have to go up or, and you may have some too, of course, but.
Uh, Mark, do you know that Ty and Bonn Packet mentions cleaning up the storm drains at their current facility?
Um, it talks about within the building itself.
Okay.
Yeah, it talks about within. I didn't see anything.
It talks about general compliance with the regulations and masks for stormwater management policy.
You may just have to go into it a little more deeper.
So my third one was to ensure that the internal drainage is sealed. I think that's important.
That's our plan anyways.
Well, and I think there's going to be a new system installed, right? So I, I mean, how long is that going to take? Do you know what you're going to do? Is that something that you would do before this process?
My understanding is that when Argo Tech bought the building from J.P. Stevens, it had already been sealed off. We just wanted to make it clear to you folks that.
That's our intention.
We want there to be no chance that anything in there gets out.
Right.
But will there be a new internal drainage system installed?
No.
No, so the plan is to simply cap off, make sure it's completely correct?
Make sure that that existing system that's within the building is capped and does not exit.
Yeah, you had mentioned that you were going to concrete over it anyways.
Right.
How, how are you heating this place?
We're still working on that because the building itself virtually has no heat. Argo Tech and J.P. Stevens use the machinery on site to produce the heat for the winter. Um, we're looking at redoing the AC units that are currently there and buying ones that have heat incorporated in them as well.
Well, I was going to say, if you're going to go to oil heat, you're going to need to put a rail tank in there somewhere.
Right. But the building currently has gas for heat and we plan on utilizing the existing gas system that's in there and just tapping off of that for our new heating facility and air systems.
Luckily, that's not part of the exemption for new services.
Right.
Yeah.
Existing service, so.
So, I mean, the, the lights, the cleaning the catch basins, the ensuring the initial drainage is sealed, I wouldn't mind conditioning those.
But that will, when they come back.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess that's a question, right? So, I mean, we can obviously make it a condition that they, that the catch basins are regularly inspected and cleaned and we can make it a condition that they, you know, make sure that the internal drainage system is, is, you know, capped and sealed. I guess the only real question is whether we want to see a lighting plan or not.
Yeah, that's the.
Possibly, if you can.
It seems to me the front is well lit and all we're talking about is that there'd be sufficient lighting in the, in the back of the lot.
Right. But I mean, if there's sixty employees on a third shift, I mean, you, I mean, obviously, they have an interest in having it well lit as well, but.
Yeah, I believe for instance, the loading dock, I believe, has lights on it too. It would live so. No show up on that plan. It's just the pole.
So that's the very back of the building.
So other inspection may show.
I think it makes sense to see the lighting plan.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see a lighting plan.
I mean, is that, is that a real hardship for you folks to come back in a couple of weeks with a lighting plan or at least letting us know what's there?
We, we can do that. Um, it takes, if you're going to have a professional lighting plan done, they get into, you know, lumens and making sure that it's done properly. If you're looking for that level of detail, then, you know, that's going to take a little bit of time to send that off to a consultant to do lighting.
General lighting.
I think if we.
General lighting.
I think if you guys can, I mean, it sounds like we don't necessarily even know what's there right now. It might be helpful if you figure out what's there, maybe turn on all the lights one night and see how it looks in the back corner of the lot and see what you might need.
Sure.
Um, to give us an idea.
Yeah, there could be a lot of wall packs that are just shut off or not used or burnt out.
Right.
Right. I mean, I, I think that that should give us a clear picture, clear enough to.
I mean, I would definitely be looking to see, yes, we're going to put up a light, one or two in the back of that lot there because right now there's, I mean, it's clear that even from the dock or from the front, there's nothing getting in that back. So I need to see some plan to put, and it doesn't have to be, I agree, it doesn't need to be this, whatever you want to call it, professional thing. But it needs to, I, I need to know and be able to stipulate that you're putting a couple of lights in the back.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we should.
We could do that. I mean, you know, one of the nice things with new LED lighting, it, it really is so efficient and it just lights up a great area. So that, you know, where before you could, you could put in four or five light poles and you can put two LED lights in and it just lights up the whole area. So we can work towards that.
Um, does the board want to see the lighting on twenty-four seven or are they okay with the lights being turned off at the end of the shift and when it's closed up?
Sounds like there is no end when they're doing a third shift, so the goal is.
Well, but there isn't a third shift yet. I mean, I think.
There isn't a third shift yet. I'm going to put my Enviro tree hugging hat on and it's near wetlands and there are critters that get thrown off by lighting. There's also neighbors that are nearby, so I, I.
Yeah, there's a whole group.
I agree that the parking lot needs to be safe, but I don't want it to be so lit up that it's, that it's ends up being a light nuisance to neighbors and also to the wildlife.
Right. So that's part of the challenge in what you deliver to us.
Well, I think too, I mean, if you're talking about, you know, a second and third shift kind of scenario, there's not retail traffic, you know, presumably those may be smaller shifts. It's something that may be consolidated at the front end of the lot. So maybe the, you know, you're not getting deliveries at the loading dock presumably. I mean, if, if those sort of things line up, then you may not have the same need for light in the back. I guess not knowing what's actually there now makes it hard for us to sort of make sure that that's safe, but I think Jessica's right. That back corner doesn't need to be light enough to, you know, to read a book by at two in the morning. If everyone's parked in the first twenty spots up by the front lights. So I think if you can just give us some more information about that, that would, you know, set me at ease to make sure that there isn't going to be a dangerous situation some winter night.
Save you money in the long run, you're not paying for electricity that you don't actually need.
Right.
And the peepers are still happy.
And the peepers are happy. See, I knew that I'd be able to. Somebody cares about the peeper frogs.
Yeah, the peepers.
So does anybody else, I mean, if they're coming back in two weeks, is there anything else that people?
Yeah. How many trucks are you coming in and out of there in a week's time?
Um.
Oh, it's in there.
Oh, it's in there, yeah. I didn't look.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but.
It's in there.
Okay. I was just curious off the top of my head. I'm looking at it next time.
It's pretty comprehensive.
UPS goes twice a day.
Yeah, I saw it. Sorry. Something like I was saying, you were sorry.
So, um, looking at it, um, like you said, we got UPS and FedEx coming in and out, tracks or trailer trucks. You know, we don't think we're looking at, you know, ten times a week for UPS, twice a day or FedEx. For the area. FedEx is like three times a week coming in and out depending on how it's being shipped. Vending trucks, which would be the, you know, once a week, uniformed trucks because they have employee uniforms or once a week. Other suppliers about ten per week. So you get trash that comes in weekly probably or every other week. And, you know, looking at guests, five or so. So, I mean, it's not a heavy truck traffic. Looking at it depending on how it grows, I mean, definitely at the beginning.
Right. If you add that third.
Trucks a week.
If you add that third shift, do you expect the, the other deliveries to sort of increase or is it more or less going to be the same kind of operation?
Basically, they're just putting more stuff on the same trucks.
Yeah, okay.
I wouldn't expect traffic to increase at all.
Okay. So folks, short of the lighting plan and the conditions we've talked about, obviously, I mean, we've gotten assurances about the snow removal and that sort of thing, that we can make a condition as well. Is there any other information that you folks want to see that and come back with?
No.
And everything in twelve point seven nine, I've kind of gone through as well.
Right.
And we've covered each topic.
Chat, we good?
Yeah, I think we did. We covered it quite a lot.
Okay. So if you, if you folks can come back, I mean.
What do you think would be appropriate time?
We're in a meeting, it's going to be three.
March first, I believe.
Yes.
So in two weeks, I don't know if that's enough time for you or not. So we meet the first and the fifteenth of March.
I think we could come back in the first and have the plan ready. Like you said, adding the snow storage areas is not a, a large area. Lighting is probably the, the most time consuming. Excuse me, and we can, we can address that.
Okay.
Ensuring the internal drainage.
Great.
So I just want to make sure that I don't want them to have to come back.
No, I agree. And that's why I think.
So just a lighting plan and, um.
Well, I think the other things.
We'll check the internal drainage system to make sure it's.
Right.
Do you want to, yeah, check the stormwater? And if you, I don't know, are you going to create a different plan for the lighting plan or are you going to put it on your existing site plan?
We'll probably add it to.
Okay, so if you do that, you might as well just want to add the snow storage locations.
Yes. Yes, we will.
And was there anything else that needed to be on the plan?
We have doors from, for the ADA.
The ADA spots. Let's put those on the plan too.
Spot grids, yeah. So if you're going to change the site plan anyway, you're not, just put that stuff on and then that covers that.
I think that's everything. I think the only other things are, we can condition.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything else.
Cleaning of the catch basins, as long as there's no other questions on the stormwater plan.
You know, as far as cleaning the catch basins and everything like that, is after they purchase the property, they'll hire a professional company to come in and clean them professionally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
I mean, we, we.
A timetable as to once a year, you know, and have it on the plan that it'll be.
You guys are doing your own landscaping? Are you cutting your own grass and your bushes and stuff or are you hiring somebody or?
We currently use a landscaping company. We use D-Bolt Landscaping in East Hampton, their current facility.
All right. Any other questions at this point?
So we need a motion to continue the.
Motion to continue the, the request for special permit before called Main Street Yankee Home Machine till March first, our next meeting, et cetera.
Yep, that's six, yeah.
One question.
Well.
Do you act on it? I don't know if there's anybody here that.
Sure.
Mr. Cernax in a butter to the rear of the.
Any, any comments or questions?
Thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you. Any comments or questions, sir?
No, none.
Okay. All right. So we had a motion in a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
A second.
Chat.